Thank you.
Councilmember Cordero?
Here.
Councilmember Escobedo?
Here.
Councilmember Soto?
Here.
Councilmember Waterfield?
Here.
Madam Mayor, Patino?
Here. And could you make a brief announcement about accessing the meeting?
Sure. To participate in the city council meeting virtually, please register to speak using the link on the agenda under public comment or call 1-669-900-9128 and use webinar ID To raise your hand to speak on a particular agenda item, please use the raise hand button in the Zoom meeting portal. If you are using a phone, please press star nine on your telephone keypad to raise your hand to speak. When your time is available, your microphone will be unmuted for the time allotted by the mayor and will be muted upon completion of your comments.
Thank you. Mr. Watson, our city attorney, could you please give the closed session report?
Thank you, Madam Mayor and council. With respect to item one and two, instructions were provided to leave council. No further report is necessary.
Thank you. As there are no proclamations this evening, the first item on our agenda is the public comment period. Madam Clerk, could you please read the criteria for the public comment portion of the agenda?
This time is reserved to accept comments from the public on consent agenda items, closed session items, or matters not otherwise scheduled on the printed agenda this evening. Unless otherwise directed by the mayor, speakers will have three minutes to comment. Direction to staff may be given, however, state law does not allow action to be taken on matters not on the printed agenda.
Madam Clerk, do we have any speakers this evening?
Yes, I believe we have one. It would be Ms. Peggy Perez. She's on the phone line. Ms. Perez? There you go. Would you like to speak? Ms. Perez? She's got her phone unmuted. Can you hear me? I'm sending a unmute. Can you unmute your phone? She appears to have her phone unmuted. Ms. Perez? Maybe, Madam Mayor, I can try to reach her by phone in a few minutes.
Okay. Moving on, Mr. Silwell, did you have any comments? Okay, moving on to the consent calendar. Madam Clerk, could you please read item number three?
Routine items are presented for city council approval without discussion as a single agenda item in order to expedite the meeting. The consent calendar is approved by roll call vote with one motion. These items are discussed only on the request of council members.
Does anyone wish to?
No move, Madam Mayor.
Okay. We have a motion and a second to approve the consent calendar. Any further discussion? Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Councilmember Cordero?
Aye.
Councilmember Waterfield?
Aye.
Councilmember Soto?
Aye.
Councilmember Escobedo?
Aye.
Madam Mayor, Patino?
Aye. Next, we have a public hearing. Madam Clerk, could you please read the title?
The city council will consider approving the 2020 urban water management plan.
Okay. And the staff report is to be made by Director of Utilities, Mr. Springer. Good evening.
Good evening.
You're on.
Thank you. Good evening, Madam Mayor, council members. The request of staff tonight is that you hold a public hearing. This is required by the Urban Water Management Plan Act. And then, after getting comments from the public hearing, adopt a resolution approving the 2020 urban water management plan. Once that is accomplished, we will submit the urban water management plan to the Department of Water Resources, the California State Library, and any water agency that we deal with. So that would include Santa Luis Obispo County, Santa Barbara County, and Napa Community Services District. The Urban Water Management Plan Act was adopted in 1983, and it provides a framework where it looks at what water delivery and uses are available for a community, the sources of water, the efficient use of that water, demand management, and water shortage contingency planning. We are required by law to update this plan every five years, and that's why we're here before you this evening. The 2020 urban water management plan, as drafted and submitted to council, meets all of the statutory requirements. Appendix K of this agreement shows that there are 20 pages of checklists alone to make sure that we meet the framework for the state requirement on the urban water management plan, and that's why the plan is so large. So this is a long-range planning document. It provides trends in population and water use through the year 2045. And it talks about water supply reduction scenarios, including increases in demand for growth. So there are statutory requirements that come with the urban water management plan that require us to look at what would happen during 10% water reduction, for example, or 20, and those are all in the report. Important to note is that the city does have adequate water supplies to meet these various drought requirements as required in our plan. That being said, the state of California and the entire West is in extreme drought conditions, and I would like to remind the listening public that the city council has adopted our Stage One of the Water Shortage Contingency Plan, which has certain requirements. And that includes that all new construction meet water-efficient landscape requirements, irrigation runoff and overwatering is prohibited. All hoses that are used for washing cars and that sort of thing should have an automatic shut-off nozzle. Pools and fountains must have pumps that recirculate the water. Washing of sidewalks and driveways is prohibited. We encourage people to use push broom or blower. No outdoor watering between noon and four. And lastly, that no irrigation or outdoor watering within 48 hours of a measurable rainfall event. While the groundwater basin in the Santa Maria area is plentiful, it is a limited resource, and we do encourage people to conserve. I'd be happy to answer any questions that the council may have.
Thank you, Mr. Springer. Are there any questions from the council?
I have one question.
Ms. Waterfield?
Is this an annual report, or is it every five?
So we, yeah, we are required to do it every five years.
I do have a question.
Ms. Soto?
Thank you. In the staff report, and you mentioned it now as well, that the city has ample water supply for various drought scenarios, both today and in the foreseeable future. What is foreseeable future to me? I know.
Sure. The report goes through various scenarios, and it indicates the city's anticipated growth out through the year 2045. So the various scenarios that we were required to model, which would be single driest year or three dry years in a row based on the historic record, indicate that the city has adequate water, and the best way I'd describe it is adequate water rights to meet those needs through 2045.
Right. And so I guess my follow-up question is, I know that we've been having numerous conversations about water supply, and even though the city has water rights, we purchased water rights at the state level, I know that we are only able to, we're only allocated a small percentage, if I'm not mistaken, of those water rights. And so how does that, does that impact this at all?
So that scenario was also played out in the tables, as we're required to do. And you're absolutely right. The city holds a little over 17,000 acre foot of water right to state Table A water, as we call it. This year, with a very dry scenario, and certainly you can't turn on the news without hearing about Lake Oroville being low or low flows everywhere, the city is only going to be eligible to receive 5% of that 17,000 acre feet. So in this year, it'd be about 850 acre feet of water imported from state water. We augment that with our local groundwater supplies, so we are able to fulfill that need. An important aspect of this is talking about the water supply that's available. What this long-range planning document doesn't talk about is, well, in order to meet future growth, let's say for another 30,000 people, doesn't mean that we won't need to drill another groundwater well so that we can meet peak demand or fire demand for the population. It's a discussion of whether or not the city has the water available to do that.
And I know that another point of discussion has been the nitrates, the groundwater. Was that something?
So this does talk about water quality to some level, and nitrates are frankly any pollutant that would be in the drinking water supply would be a concern for us. The Twitchell Management Authority, of which the city is a party, does an annual report, and it indicates that nitrates continue to tick up. In fact, I've brought items before this council for outside user agreements where there are potable drinking wells for water systems that want to connect to the city system because they are exceeding nitrate levels. But it's something that we closely monitor and track. Should nitrates continue to increase in the basin, there would come a point where the city would need to treat the groundwater to remove those nitrates. That does not reduce the city's water right. We would still have the right to pump the water, but it would be an additional expense to remove that contaminant should we get to that level.
Shall I have a question for you?
Wait, one moment.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, Mr. Escobedo?
Yeah, no, no questions.
Oh, I thought you had a question.
Yeah, I had it, but already.
Okay.
Thank you.
You had mentioned what would happen, that's in the report, if we had a 10% to 20% reduction. Have we had that much reduction? And this is not just state water, but it includes groundwater as well?
Right. So what the, and once again, these are framework that are set up by the state, so we follow their recipe, if you will, for this document. The, it talks about certain percent reductions in the water availability. So with the city holding significant groundwater rights, it is a reduction from that larger number. So as when we look through how those scenarios would affect the city's ability to provide water, there is not the major impact that you might see in other agencies that have limited groundwater availability.
So we're talking about groundwater, just our groundwater and the 10% to 20%. Has that ever happened?
No, it has not.
My question, okay.
The basin, there is a stipulation and adjudication, and the court holds continuing jurisdiction. Part of the requirements is the Twitchell Management Authority annually funds a area engineer that does a groundwater report, and part of what they are to determine is if the groundwater basin is in overdraft.
Okay.
And based, we had a public hearing on this 10 days ago, and the engineer found that the basin was not determined to be in overdraft. For that reason, there are no restrictions on pumping.
Thank you.
Mr. Cordero?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. Springer, you mentioned, or earlier, that one of the other council people mentioned the nitrates. Given the history that you're able to extract from the data that you have, is it safe to suggest that it's not a matter of we may have to treat the nitrates, but when? We're going to treat the nitrates? It just seems like it gets a little bit worse every year because, you know, to some degree because of the ag that's going on. We will end up having to treat this water at some time in the future, if that's 15 years from now, or 20 or 25 years from now. That's going to happen if we continue to have ag. Is that about right?
Thank you, Councilman Cordero. We, based on the current trends, your statement of it's a question of when, not if, holds true right now. What we have seen over the last 10 years is a drier period. We have not seen anyone driving the 166. You don't see the water stored up behind Twitchell Dam, right? So for the groundwater recharge. So there are definitely some ag legacy issues during, related to fertilizer, the nitrate. The Regional Board has recently passed an ag order 4.0, which looks at net nitrogen use on the property. So we are hopeful that the trend of increased fertilizer loading is a historic relic and not a continuing trend. That being said, it's really unknown the amount of nitrates that are kind of waiting to be perked down into the groundwater should we get additional rains. And that will, of course, be offset by any additional water that's perked in would dilute the amount of nitrate. The contaminant level for nitrates is based on the concentration in it. So the more water that we can perk in that comes out of Twitchell Reservoir, the better it is in the long run for all of us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Could you explain, and I just, and I know we've repeated this several times, but a lot of times people are, think that we are arbitrarily just selling water to Napa and explain how we got there?
Sure. Madam Mayor, the city of Santa Maria entered into stipulation with the court. This was a way to settle the groundwater litigation that had been going on for decades. It was signed by the city of Santa Maria, Guadalupe, Golden State Water, Napa Community Services District, basically all the water purveyors, and the majority of the landowners in the basin to bring that litigation to a close. Part of that stipulation was a concern that Napa had an area of localized depression. And the idea of the groundwater localized depression would be that if that water level got low enough, it would have the potential for salt water to come into the basin, especially a low spot, if you will, in the basin. So part of the stipulation that was agreed to essentially by all the parties is that Napa Community Services District would import water from the city of Santa Maria. We do have an agreement between the city of Santa Maria and Napa Community Services District to fulfill that obligation, but essentially, that contract and that language is part of the stipulation and required by the court.
Thank you. Any other questions of Mr. Springer? Okay. So I'd like to open up the public hearing. Madam Clerk, do we have any requests to speak or written correspondence?
We have no written correspondence, and it doesn't appear that we have anyone on the line who wishes to speak on this item.
I'd like to close the public hearing, bring this item back to the council for any discussion and/or.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to adopt a resolution approving the 2020 urban water management plan.
Okay. I have a motion and a second to adopt the resolution approving the 2020 urban water management plan. Any other discussion? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Councilmember Waterfield?
Aye.
Councilmember Cordero?
Aye.
Councilmember Escobedo?
Aye.
Councilmember Soto?
Aye.
Madam Mayor, Patino?
Aye. Next, we have another public hearing. Madam Clerk, could you please read the title?
The city council will consider authorizing the mayor to execute the voluntary compliance agreement between the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, HUD, and the city of Santa Maria in repealing portions of ordinance number 2019-04 containing the employee housing ordinance in Title 12 of the Santa Maria Municipal Code.
And the staff report is to be made by Director of Community Development, Mr. Eng.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the city council. This agenda item of the repeal of the employee housing ordinance was brought to you back in June 1st. We're bringing this item back to you with additional information regarding HUD's investigation and proposed voluntary compliance agreement. As a matter of background, in June 2019, the city adopted the employee housing ordinance after many workshops and many hearings. Right about this time, three years ago in 2018, we had workshops in various parts of the community, and we heard concerns from residents, but also from many stakeholders. The ordinance balanced concerns of potential neighborhood concerns and impacts with the need for agricultural labor. The employee housing, as part of the ordinance, will be permitted in the multifamily zones and in single-family zones, allowed with a conditional use permit for housing accommodating seven or more employees. We have not received any applications since the adoption of the ordinance. In April 2020, HUD's Office of Fair Housing and Equal Opportunity opened an investigation, and this was followed up in August 2020 by HUD Secretary initiated complaint. The complaint alleges that the city unlawfully discriminated because of race, color, or national origin by restricting housing for H2A farmworker visa holders within the city and in violation of the Fair Housing Act. After further investigation and review, the city received in May 2021 a consent proposal that's included in the staff report as attachment A from HUD, which had determined that the city must repeal and not enforce its employee housing ordinance since the regulation of the location of H2A employers in residential zoning districts also resulted in the restriction of housing for people from a specific foreign country or national origin defined as a federally protected class and maybe discriminatory. The consent proposal is a voluntary compliance agreement and conciliation agreement between HUD, the Assistant Secretary for the Office of Fair Housing and Equal Opportunity, and the city of Santa Maria. In summary, HUD requires through the agreement that the city no longer enforce the employee housing ordinance and repeal the ordinance and notify all employee housing operators of such actions. In addition, the city would prepare and submit for HUD to review a language access plan that details how the city will provide meaningful access to limited English proficient individuals seeking services, benefits, or assertion of rights relating to the city's programs. The city will also designate an Employee Housing Resource Officer, EHRO, who will have the responsibility to receive complaints of alleged housing discrimination and complaints about the quality and safety of occupied employee housing units and serve as a primary point of contact for owners, operators, and residents of employee housing and coordinate the city's compliance of the proposed agreement. And also, within 100 days of the effective date of the agreement, the city employees substantially involved with drafting and implementation of the ordinance and all current members of the state council shall attend a training course on fair housing. Nothing contained in the agreement shall be construed to be a final finding or determination by HUD that the city intentionally engaged in unlawful practices that may have violated Title 6 of the Fair Housing Act. Given the information contained in the agreement and the potential imposed fine of $400,000, city staff recommends repeal of the employee housing ordinance as contained in portions of ordinance number 2019-04. We also ask that the mayor authorize and execute the voluntary compliance agreement between HUD and the city of Santa Maria. This concludes staff's report. We're available for any questions you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Eng. Before we hear from the public, are there any questions from the council?
I do have.
Yes, Mr. Escobedo?
Thank you. Question would be, did you mention that there's going to be one person as the point of contact between any complaint, between the community and the, yeah, this activity?
Yes. HUD is asking through the agreement that we designate an Employee Housing Resource Officer, a point of contact for the city, somebody that did not work on the ordinance.
Yeah, we think it'll be one of our existing city employees. We'll be able to designate as ancillary duty as a point of contact to comply with the agreement.
Any other questions?
Somebody was already an employee. Okay.
Any other questions? I'd like to open up the public hearing. Madam Clerk, do you have any requests to speak or written correspondence?
Madam Mayor, do not have any written correspondence. There are a few speakers on the line, but Ms. Peggy Perez wanted to speak on this item, so I'm going to try calling her.
Okay, that'll be great.
Sorry, it went to voicemail. I will call her this evening and leave her a message.
Okay. Do we have any?
Yes, we have Phil Cinco and Claire Weinman on the line.
Okay.
On Zoom. We'll start with Phil Cinco. Phil? You're unmuted.
Thank you. Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the city council. As you know, I was a principal author of the provisions that are, you're considering repealing this evening, and I'm not speaking to request, excuse me, I'm not speaking in support or opposition to staff's recommendation. I fully understand the recommendation and the reasons for it. I'm only speaking as to my personal position that the city's ordinance does not violate any state or federal laws. I spent a great deal of time researching the law before bringing it to you. And it is, it has affected me personally that HUD has taken the position that the housing ordinance, the employee housing ordinance discriminates against H2A workers based on their status as protected class. First of all, ordinance only applies to employers. It does not, it only applies to employers who provide housing to their employees. It does not directly apply to employees themselves as individual persons. So, for example, where the city ordinance requires an employer to have to keep an administrative use permit to house more than six of its employees in a single-family dwelling, if those same individuals decided to rent their own single-family dwelling, the city ordinance would have no effect. I realize it's unlikely that any workers would turn down free housing, but the example that the ordinance does not actually discriminate against any persons based on a protected class. HUD's position also does not appear to be supported by any case law that I'm aware of. In fact, there's a case that undermines the position. Farmer versus Employment Security Commission of North Carolina, 4 F3, 1254, a Fourth Circuit 1993 case, involved H2A workers who alleged that their employer had violated the Fair Housing Act by refusing to provide them with free housing for their non-working spouses and children. The federal court ultimately disagreed and held that the Immigration Reform and Control Act, which is what created the H2A visa program, required housing of non-working family members only when that was the prevailing practice in the region. And the immigration statute applied over the Fair Housing Act since it was more specific compared to the more general Fair Housing Act statute. With respect to housing of H2A workers, the Immigration Reform and Control Act provides, and I quote, "In part, the employer shall be permitted to provide housing needing applicable federal standards for temporary labor camps or to secure housing which meets the local standards for rental and/or public accommodations." I personally read this section as deferring the local jurisdictions with respect to all types of standards for housing, including zoning, which is what your ordinance is based on. Residents dwelling in zones where heavy manufacturing takes place are not allowed. So I would take the position that this section from the Immigration Reform and Control Act prevails over any conflicting language in the FHA. Obviously, my time is about to run out, so I had more to say, but that sums up my position that regardless of how you vote, you should take the position that the ordinance is not illegal. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cinco.
Claire, are you available to speak? Claire? Claire?
You're not doing well tonight.
There you go.
Let's see. Louie, can you hear me?
Yes. Yes.
Am I on the phone or computer?
You're on the computer.
Okay, well, you can hang up the phone then.
Okay.
Sorry. Can you still hear me?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. Thank you so much. Let me just switch back. Who loves technology? Good evening. My name is Claire Weinman, and I'm the president of the Grower Shipper Association of Santa Barbara and Santa Luis Obispo Counties. We acknowledge that this is a challenging situation. We would like to restate our appreciation for the efforts of the city council, staff, and community, and the outreach that took place, and the efforts in developing the ordinance. We would like to restate our commitment to remaining good neighbors and emphasize that we will continue to remain a committed community partner going forward. Thank you.
What about Ms. Pettis? Can you reach?
I'm going to try her on the computer again.
Okay.
Ms. Perez, are you there? Can you speak on the phone? Oh, there you go. Yay. Yes, ma'am, we can. Sorry about that. Sorry about that.
I would just like to make a comment. I've been around Santa Maria, I've been born and raised in Santa Maria for years, been around the field workers for years. I even remember out when we have the airbase, that's where we have the field workers living out there. And they were just, come in for six months and then they would leave. And now, it's like, there aren't any rules for anybody anymore. I think we have forgotten about the people that are born and raised here. If you're familiar with the farmworkers, and, yes, they do hard work, but they do not have problems finding homes. We have people living in apartments, two, two to three families. If you're familiar with Santa Maria, people that work not just in the field, but work all over, at nighttime, there is not a parking place in Santa Maria. We have no problems with people having homes and places to live, and these are field workers. It seems like we're always taking care of the next person. You took a rest home on Broadway that were people living in there, people of, they were citizens of the United States. You made that into where it is now for the field workers. So, I think we get things a little backwards, and I know that they do hard work, but there are people that are in Santa Maria that are on welfare and can't find jobs. Those are jobs that we can have just as well. So, I have nothing against the farmworkers. I'm just saying that we, Santa Maria has let this town go, and we only look at the other person, we don't look at the citizens of Santa Maria anymore and what their rights are. And I don't see this as being the way to go, because they do make money, they send it back to Mexico, they rent homes here, they buy homes. Things that we can't do, they get to do. So, I am not for this at all, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good night.
Okay, I'd like to close the public hearing and bring this item back to the council for any discussion and a motion. Mr. Cordero.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd just like to reiterate what I said a couple of weeks ago, and that is that I disagree with the assessment given by the federal government. I disagree in the sense, in the sense that there's anything that we did as a council that represents anything remotely close to being against any segment of the, of the community of which the H-2A workers are a very important part of. And we, we took input from all the stakeholders over a long period of time in various places in the community in order to do the best job that we possibly could. And I tend to agree with a lot of what Mr. Phil Cinco said. However, we have a situation here where the federal government is trying to establish something where a one-size-fits-all, and that doesn't always work. One-size doesn't fit all. And we are being punished for doing what I think was a good job on the part of this council, with the exception of Mr. Escobedo, who came in after that time, but, but we don't have much of a choice in this matter. We voted, I voted for the ordinance repeal two weeks ago, and I will likely do that again, but I just have to go on record saying that we made great effort and great strides to meet the needs of the community on both sides of the fence here, and I think we did an outstanding job of trying to meet those needs. And it's moderately offending that, that somebody sitting 3,000 miles away makes the decision that says that we are, have done something wrong, and I just don't, I don't agree with it, but we don't get to make all of our own decisions. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Ms. Waterfield?
Yes, you know what, and I want to make a comment too, because this is, I hear what Councilmember Cordero is saying, and this is a decision that really makes you upset about how long everything that our previous attorney did to research and, and come up with a good plan, and it worked. I mean, it completely worked. We had, we had great intentions, our neighbors seemed to be doing pretty well. I just don't like the fact that in the complaint, that they found us to be discriminatory against race, color, and national origin, but emphasized that national origin may be discriminatory. Last time, I voted that we would go ahead and do away with this, but I think this time, I'm just, I'm just going to vote against it because I just, I think it's wrong, and you said it very eloquently, Madam Mayor, last time, that we get so tired of working on housing in this city, because we live here, we understand our neighbors, we understand what they're going through, and when we make a decision, it gets undermined by the state or by the feds. And so, I just, I'm just really disappointed with, with this action.
Thank you, Ms. Waterfield. You know, we spent, what, 15 months, brought all stakeholders together, and to come up with something that we thought would work here in Santa Maria. And since the adoption of the Employee Housing Ordinance, no conditional use permit applications proposing new employee housing have been submitted. So, it really did do the job, and it really did work. This was brought to the City Council by a very, very nice lady that didn't want all these men in a house living in a single-family neighborhood. And I'm such a firm believer in private property rights, I'm a believer in people buy a home, this is probably the largest expense that they'll ever have, and it's important to them, that is their home. And to have their neighborhood changed as this neighborhood was, and to have buses coming through the neighborhood where you've got very narrow streets. And so, I think it's, it's not a matter of accommodation. I think we came to a consensus from both sides and tried to balance this out, and we learned a lot as we went through. So, I think it was a great exercise. I don't think it was lost that. And I cannot support this. Anyway, Ms. Siro?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I think you said something that rings very true. It's, you know, we try and we learn, and when we can, or when we have the opportunity, we should do better. And, you know, ultimately, it's, I'm, you know, I have to say that intent doesn't always necess, it doesn't necessarily matter. We really need to focus more on, on the impact and the implications that our actions have and our decisions, our decision-making has, and it's, again, intent ultimately doesn't necessarily matter, it's more the impact that we should be looking, looking at. And, and so, again, we try and we learn, and when we can, we do better, and I hope moving forward, we, we can take the lessons learned from this and do better.
Thank you. Any other comments?
I have a.
Oh, Mr. Escobedo?
Yeah, I have a question to see the attorney.
Sure.
So, in the scenario that we didn't repeal this ordinance, what consequences would that
There's nothing sure of consequences, but the federal agency who's provided us with the voluntary compliance has advised us that in the event that we choose not to go along those, that with the agreement, that they will likely bring administrative and/or civil penalties and civil litigation to us to enforce the fair housing standard.
So, what are we looking at in terms of money?
Again, initially, there was a proposed $400,000 penalty, but if it's litigated, again, I can't speculate what, what they would ask for at that point.
And another question, in case we repeal it, is there anything that could guarantee the tranquility of our neighborhoods, the single family?
I would love to be able to guarantee the tranquility of neighborhoods. It is beyond my authority, but I can certainly say that if there was a problem raised by our residents, that we would certainly look at other enforcement and ordinance tools to prevent, you know, an outbreak of difficulty. Again, the tool that we utilized was the best that could be effectuated at the time, and it was done with an understanding that we had the cooperation of both the growers and employers, as well as the community and the residents. And we would likely go back through a process based on the situation we found ourselves in. If we did see an influx of new housing, employer-based housing in residential neighborhoods, we would look at other enforcement tools and other ordinances. I can't speculate because it's hard to anticipate, but certainly, we would keep every option open, because we do want tranquility in our community.
Thank you. Mr. Cordero.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So, hearing what you're saying, Mr. Watson, is, is that should a problem arise that, like it arose, like it came up when, when the issue of H-2A housing first came to us, there are, do you see the possibility of a pathway to still, so that we could continue to support regulations without infringing on the, on the, on the rights of any particular class? Now, it doesn't make any difference what class it is, but do you see the possibility of a path for that?
Absolutely, and I would engage HUD in crafting such a path that they would find to be within their guidelines. We've now potentially risen to the point that they've reviewed our ordinance, and while they found this one in their, in their initial review to be lacking, we certainly would engage them, as well as one of, as any other stakeholders, to effectuate our community-based standards, which is part of the issue here, is recognizing the council's concern about a community-based standard, not a federal-based standard imposed on the community. So, I do believe there's a pathway. I haven't had to effectuate it, because again, until we engage with HUD and we identify that there is a specific problem to solve, then I think that that's part of, would be part of ongoing discussion.
Okay, and in, and in line with what Mr. Escobedo has, has asked you, we're already being informed by, by the federal government that we're looking at a $400,000 assessment against the city for, for the ordinance if it, if it is in fact enforced.
That, that, that is their, their position that they take in the event that a voluntary compliance is not provided. However, it could get larger. My point is, that was their, shall we say, opening bid?
Uh huh.
That, that, should we, and that was eliminated in the negotiation of a voluntary compliance agreement. Should they be forced to enforce against us or litigate against us, then all of the previous agreements are off the table, and they will use probably every asset that the federal government has in enforcement against the City of Santa Maria. And the potential that a court would make a finding that the, the city inadvertently or intentionally was discriminatory, which I do not believe and which we deny emphatically, and this agreement does not make such a finding.
Okay. Thank you very much, sir.
Ms. Waterfield?
I'm not turning my microphone off.
No, thank you. I think this is what I need to understand, but I also, is very disturbing, that the federal government can come in and threaten us with a $400,000 fine automatically, and I don't, I assume they would have to prove that we were discriminatory or racist against this ordinance. And I look around us, and we're all of Mexican descent sitting up here, and so, I, I just, it just really upsets me that they feel they can automatically come in and do it. Now, Mr. Cinco said there was no case law in any of this type of discussions that we're having here, or threats that we're having here. Is there that you know of, and can they just come in and do it without taking us to court?
Again, what we have in front of us is a voluntary compliance to avoid litigation. If the, the.
It's extortion.
No, it's, it's enforcement of statutes. We do it regularly on code enforcement. My, my division does this. What, what they're trying to ask us to do is a voluntary compliance, and I want to separate one thing that you said earlier, because I want to be very clear. There is no allegation of racism, there is no allegation of any implied bias by any council member, I want to make that clear. There is not of that. What, what there is, is that the ordinance as developed, particularly the urgency ordinance that was developed initially, has an impact that is different on national origin, not ethnicity, and not based on race or anything else, but it has a, what they call a disparate impact on nationality based on that status. And while my learned counsel, Mr. Cinco, did a lot of research, and he did review this situation, my experience in 33 years of litigation is a little different, and I do know that notwithstanding the fact that there isn't any published cases at a appellate level, does not mean that the federal government has not enforced these statutes against other local government agencies, or entered into voluntary compliance with other government agencies, and recognize that their, that their, their obligation under the federal statute is to enforce federal law and obtain compliance. That can be through voluntary action, or it can be through litigation. The difference with litigation is there is ultimately a finding by a federal judge and/or jury of the truth of the allegations. While there's a voluntary compliance, it's a, it's a agreement from both sides that we will comply with federal law, which we are obligated to do, and we believe we've done.
Well, you know, just looking at the word discriminatory, and so, I looked it up in the dictionary just to make sure that I wasn't off base, and it says prejudice. And it, I just don't like anyone calling me that.
I understand that.
You know, it's just, it's very, I just don't like it.
I understand that, and that's why I also don't want to use the very charged term racist, because that is a charged term in this current political environment.
But I don't want, I don't want to have to pay someone $400,000 just to have them not call me that anymore. You know, it's, it, to me, it's just, or make an ordinance go away, just so that we're, we're not labeled with that label. That's just my comment. You don't have to, you don't.
I have no response to that, ma'am. I, I agree.
Yeah, yeah, no.
Okay, I guess we have comments. Do I have a motion?
Don't move.
Second.
Repeal it.
To be clarified, there's two actions recommended. The first one is to adopt a resolution authorizing the execution of a voluntary compliance, compliance agreement and conciliation agreement between the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development and the Assistant Secretary for Fair Housing and Equal Opportunity and the City of Santa Maria.
That's the first one.
And a second recommendation to your interview for the first reading.
Hold your mic.
In ordinance regulation, you can do those as a motion.
That's my motion.
Okay. Okay. That's your second?
That's my second.
Okay, Madam Clark, can you please call the roll?
Councilmember Cordero?
Aye.
Councilmember Soto?
Aye.
Councilmember Escobedo?
Councilmember Escobedo?
Aye.
Councilmember Waterfield?
No.
Madam Mayor, Patino?
No. Motion carries. Next, we have two regular business items. Madam Clerk, I understand the council will hear these items together. Could you please read the titles?
Yes, Madam Mayor. Madam Mayor, councilmembers, the city council will consider making amendments to the 2021-22 mid-cycle budget, and then the city council will also consider personnel changes approving the city's salary schematic and amending the conflict of interest code as authorized by the 2021-2022 amended budget.
Just, sorry.
Yes, go ahead, Mr. Escobedo.
Yeah, I just want to, in regards to the last item of the housing ordinance, just want to request that in the, oh, it's Tom, it's really, it really bothers me that this federal government comes and tells us all this, and I watch all the videos more than once, and listening to this agreement, this commitment that was created between the community, the growers, the city, and it was just, and I say hi, but I would like to just request the city attorney to look into an ordinance or something that might, that will comply with the help, and because, you know, my priority, it's to have a nice neighborhood, a really calm neighborhood, and I know this is the same with my constituents, they just want to, you know, enjoy their lives, and I know also, I don't want to, and I know that H2A is a great program, it's important, especially here in Santa Maria, but my, however, my priority is that our neighbors are, our neighborhoods are, you know, will preserve, and that I don't want any potential displacement, displacement from either residents, current residents, farm workers, that the ones that are already living here for, they've been living here for a long time, so that was going on in my head when I was thinking about my vote. So I definitely would like the commitment to bring on in the foreseeable future something that can make people comfortable and can create this good relationship between the city, the residents, and also the employees, employers.
Yes, sir. We will.
Thank you.
Something that'll be in compliance with HUD. Okay, staff report is to be made by Mr. Stillwell.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and members of the city council. Tonight, we are bringing forward amendments to the two-year budget. We've completed or nearly completed the first year of the adopted two-year budget that the council adopted last June, and tonight, we have proposed amendments to the second year of the budget. For tonight, then, we'll give a brief overview of some of the economic factors and where we are relative to the economy, an analysis of the general fund and Measure U, an overview of those proposed amendments to the budget, some of the big issues, which are the Rescue Act funding from the federal government, and CalPERS continues to remain a big issue, and then we'll hear from the public and ask for council's direction and consideration for adoption of the amended budget. So as I go into this, so the council's adopted budget, as proposed on this for the action tonight, the adopted budget that the council adopted last June, the two-year budget, will remain in effect for the second year, except for the amendments that we call out. It's essentially an update of the budget to address issues we have identified during the past year, additional costs and impacts in the future, and opportunities for us with additional revenue to continue to maintain and enhance services. As far as the economic outlook, so a year ago, we, as you recall, right during the middle of the beginning of the COVID pandemic shutdown, there was high unemployment rates throughout the nation, the state, Santa Barbara County, and Santa Maria. Santa Maria's unemployment rate at that point was nearly 17%. All the rates have dropped by about half. Santa Maria still remains relatively high compared to the rest, as Santa Maria historically is being an agricultural community and with some seasonality of our workforce. So things are much better this year than they were a year ago. As far as revenue, the revenue continues to remain flat going forward from what we anticipate for the end of this current fiscal year, and that's a change from where we were a year ago. We thought with the economic shutdown that there would be a large impact on our sales tax in particular. As this slide shows, our sales tax actually did well during the last year, and we anticipate it remaining steady in the next year, in this upcoming year. And Santa Maria, we're fortunate in a couple areas compared to some of the other cities that were really impacted with loss of revenue. One is our revenue tends to be locally grown and tends to be, so it's people who are here, who are shopping here, living here, and then the other side of it is our revenues tend to be basic commodities, such as our big-box retailers, vehicle sales, things that remained strong during this past year. In addition, there was a recent Supreme Court decision, the Wayfair decision, that was quite fortuitous for every government that collects the sales tax, in that people who are purchasing things online pay the local sales tax for the services they're receiving from the local government. And so for the folks who were complying or required to comply with the stay-at-home order during this past year and bought things online, they were paying sales tax, and that helped as well. The property tax also continues to remain strong. As you know, with property tax, it's assessed, and the taxes are due in future years, so we're not seeing, we didn't see a drop-off from COVID as a result of property tax impacts because the tax rates were set before COVID, but now with the hot real estate market, we don't anticipate any reduction of property tax going forward at this time. And in fact, if we start looking out a couple more years, property tax revenue would probably continue to grow. And that's a double-edged sword. On the one hand, the property tax revenue is important for us to provide our basic services. The other side of it, it's an indication of our hot housing market, and that'll provide other impacts with, on our residents being able to afford here for us to maintain the region's workforce, housing overcrowding, some of the other problems that come with this steep increase in housing prices. Our TOT revenue is the revenue we get off of, from tourists and travelers staying in our hotels primarily, and it hasn't been a primary revenue. It is a large revenue for the city. It's not one of our primary revenues compared to some of our neighboring communities, either to the north or south. It did take a large drop as the stay-at-home order was in effect as people weren't able to travel, but we do continue to maintain some basic TOT revenue from folks just coming to Santa Maria for business needs or passing through, stopping on 101. So it has remained, it hasn't dropped precipitously, but it hasn't continued to grow as it had been. We still have the hotels managing the council-approved tourist marketing district, and they did slow down their work during the shutdown, not, I mean, there weren't tourists and travelers to chase, and so they were stepping back and saving the money for the reopening. As you may see, the Visit Santa Maria and the SantamariaValley.com have ramped up with additional marketing efforts, and those are reaching out to folks to remind people as they get out and about to travel to consider Santa Maria. And so we think TOT revenue will continue to stay at existing levels and then grow on the outer years. NHIS revenue, that's the non-hazardous impacted soil, that is also a good revenue source for the city that we're able to use for general fund costs and services, and the council approved a revision to that program a year ago, and the revenue continues to remain steady for that program. So the overall anticipated revenues back with the, or with the end of this year, we anticipate general fund revenues to be nearly $73 million. Last year, at this time, when the council adopted the budget, we thought those revenues would be $70 million. So we're, and then for this now, next year, we're anticipating it to be 70, nearly $75 million. So from last year's council-adopted second year of this budget, so this upcoming year, compared to where we are now, it's an increase of nearly $5 million in revenue. And the proposed appropriations, so we anticipate this year, the general fund expenditures appropriations will be at about $72.5 million. Last year, the council adopted budget for the upcoming year, anticipated or had funding available for 72, almost 73 million, but now we are able to fund about $76.5 million worth of appropriations for this upcoming year, and so the amendments reflect that. So we're able to, there's a number of shifts in order to maintain and enhance police and fire and public safety, and so you'll see on the police department here, we're able to increase that budget in the general fund by 2.1 million. On Measure U, you'll see a corresponding increase in the fire department. Also, we're able to increase funding in recreation and parks as park services continue to open back up, and the city manager's office has an increase for remodeling this building primarily, and some other modest increases throughout the rest of the general fund. The budget balancing method, so if you notice those prior charts, the revenue, so the expenditures are over the projected revenues by about $2.6 million. So the revenues we showed were at about $74 million, appropriations are at $76.5, so that's our $2.6 million gap. We show that we'll use a draw from LEAF, but in the past, we've been able to see that with our staffing turnover rates, that has created some savings as people naturally leave the organization to retire, take different jobs or whatnot. It takes some time to hire new people, and that creates a savings in the meantime, and so we anticipate being able to have the savings of 1.6 million built into the budget and a draw from LEAF of a million. But I think as we go through the year, we'll probably be able to address the budget gap with that whole 2.6 million from maintaining vacancies. We don't anticipate to have to do a heavy hiring freeze like we did last year to maintain services, but we are still going to continue to take a hard look at not hiring for positions that we're not assured that we can maintain with future funding sources. We still have the ongoing challenge of PERS costs, workers' compensation costs, liability insurance costs growing faster than revenue, and then service demands continue to grow. So we're still very cognizant to not fill positions or expand and hire more people if we're not thinking, if we're not confident that we'll be able to fund that staffing level in the future couple of years. And then this shows how we are balancing the budget. Again, a chart from the previous graph where we'll work hard to maintain vacancies, and but actually, the natural attrition, I think, of maintaining vacancies can help us reach that 62%, and then we'll work hard to be able to close the gap of the other 38%. And we're asking for the council to appropriate the LEAF draw, but we'll work hard to maintain savings other ways as well. And the reason we do want to protect the LEAF is we have been drawing on that since 2008, 2009. It's our rainy day fund. We had a peak LEAF balance of $11.7 million, and it's under $10 million now, and it is still, as we saw with this last year with the recession, it's very important to have the LEAF fund. It was very helpful for us to be able to have one-time funding to avoid layoffs, and the challenge we have as a local government, most of our costs are on staffing and services and employees, and as the revenue fluctuates greatly, we don't have the flexibility to fluctuate staffing levels to that same degree, and so we want to avoid having to lay off good employees who are providing services just because of a cyclical change in the revenue. On the Measure U, similar trajectory with Measure U as it was with general fund. On the estimated actuals for this year, we think Measure U will end with $11.5 million. It's a total of projected revenue of $21.1 million and expenditures of $16.6 million. And the adopted budget for year two, this upcoming year, anticipated revenues and expenditures of Measure U of about $18.5 million, and now looking at our updated revenue projections, we think Measure U revenue will generate $21.8 million, and we have expenditures projected at $22.5 million. And so the, I should say, so we have also the council's reserve policy, which is a calculation based on revenue of $4.4 million, so $4.3 million, so we will reach that, and we have an additional unrestricted fund balance of $6.5 million. So Measure U, one challenge we have with that, it's nice to have the revenue, the revenue's strong and rebounding. Hiring the people has taken some time, so that's one big reason for the savings. It primarily, Measure U primarily funds staffing, and of that staffing primarily funds police and firefighter, public safety staffing, and it takes a while to recruit those folks, hire them, bring them in, and so as we expanded the staffing, a couple of years ago, we're still working to get those areas fully staffed, so that's some of the savings. The bigger challenge going forward is the revenue fluctuates, because Measure U is one type of revenue, a sales tax, and the expenditures really don't fluctuate. It's one type of expenditure, for the most part, of staffing, and so we want to make sure, and need to make sure, that the ongoing revenue can support the ongoing expenditures. So what we see here with the Measure U analysis is, last year, as we, in hindsight, we underestimated revenue, as everyone did, and we were still not able to fully expend on the expanded services because of the hiring delays, that we now have a surplus in Measure U. We took a hard look of how much of that surplus would be ongoing, and we did find that the $3.6 million of it would be ongoing, and we were able to expand the services and hire more folks in Measure U with that revenue. But it still has unrestricted fund balance that we're not appropriating at this point for ongoing expenses. Our analysis showed that if we did do that, we would run out of revenue to cover the expenses in about three years. So good news is, we have extra revenue. The other side of it is, we'll, we want to use that one-time extra revenue for one-time expenditures, and we're working with those Measure U departments to do that, and we'll bring that back to the council as capital projects. The Measure U enhancements, so as council has provided direction that the use of Measure U should be 90% for public safety, 5% for youth, and 5% for quality of life, and that is the allocation we're recommending at this point. So the breakdown then of Measure U would be $20 million for public safety, and $1 million for youth services, and $1 million for quality of life. The public safety is, as I indicated, is primarily police and fire. It also includes the Rangers, the city manager's office with the $20,000, it's our reverse 911 emergency communication system, and the finance, public safety costs is for the protection with our levy on the Santa Maria River, the debt service for that. On the youth services, it's primarily recreation programs, and then the library, and on the quality of life programs, it's again-- And on the quality of life programs, it's again the recreation and parks programs, the quality of life programs. And then the city attorney funding is for the code enforcement that helps keep our codes enforced throughout the city. And so again, the total Measure U projection for next year is twenty-two and a half million dollars. So the proposed amendments for all, so would bring the entire budget for operating, all the operating funds to nearly two hundred and seventeen million dollars. And the proposed appropriations for all funds would be two hundred and sixty-one million. And the additional, so the operating funds are the services we provide primarily through staffing. The other funds would be their capital expenses, debt service expenses, other intergovernmental transfers and things along those lines that aren't direct services, direct operations. The appropriation, so that's the general fund, which is primarily part of the budget and the part with the most discretion for the council. We also have four significant, or three significant enterprise funds. So water resources was originally at forty-eight mil, forty-eight point seven million dollars for next year, and that's projected to go up by three point two million to fifty-one point eight million. A solid waste from forty-one million to forty-three million, an increase of two point four million. And then we have public transit, which remains relatively flat at eight point nine million to provide our SMAT services and the regional RTA program, line ten. And then we have a radio technology fund, which is a fund for us to maintain the regional radio system, and that's at about a million dollars a year. A quick note then about the American Rescue Plan Act. So there's a lot of conversation about the funding that all the state, cities, states and local governments have received throughout the U.S. for Santa Maria. That was approximately thirty-seven million dollars. We did bring an item to the city council in May to get the direction from the council, and that was to reimburse the costs incurred due to COVID, invest the one-time funding in projects completed within the timeline, and reduce operating costs or increase revenue, and then strengthen the city's financial proposition and overall finances of the city. They are one-time funds. We're looking at them as a federal grant because the guidelines did come out, and there are more details on compliance than had been anticipated based on the legislation from Congress. So we did not include ARPA funds, the Rescue Act funds, as part of the budget. We'll continue with the council's direction to try to align it with the council's priorities while meeting the federal guidelines and returning to council with the particular projects moving forward. And so the guidance we have now is a lot more restricted than we had anticipated, and we're, there's a lot of discussion about the details of how we can spend the money, how local governments generally can spend the money, and asking for clarification for the federal government on that. And the federal government has indicated that they'll come out with additional guidance in August. But, you know, I mean, just some of the details are, so the legislation said we can't use it to put together, put the money in a pension fund. But obviously, if you're hiring employees to do this work, you're paying a pension. And so it's those kind of clarifications that everyone's trying to get.
One minute, Mr. Sua. Ms. Waterfield?
In regards to, the feds will come out with a plan. So does that, we're supposed to spend it within the two years when we receive it. So, but if we don't know the plan, when does the two-year time slot kick in?
Yeah.
Is it when they've let us know how we can spend it, or is it ticking right now?
It, that's a good question. Thank you, Councilmember Waterfield. It is ticking right now. The heart, we do have, we did receive half the cash, so we do have eighteen million dollars received that we need to spend in accordance with the federal guidelines. We have until the end of twenty twenty-six?
Twenty twenty-four.
Yeah, twenty twenty-four for the first half, twenty twenty-six total, to be able to spend it. So we do have time to wait for the additional guidance. We are doing the analysis to be able to hit the ground running once we know with clarity what we can spend it on and not be at risk of having to pay it back in a future year if they say that it didn't meet. Yeah, so it's, we don't want to spend the money and then a few years later say you have to use your own money because that wasn't eligible. It's a, it's a risk we're trying to avoid. And many other cities are just in the same boat as we are. We have the cash. If there's something clear we can spend it on, we'll do that. But we're in a holding pattern, waiting for additional clarity.
So we're in a holding pattern of eighteen million right now?
Yes.
But timeframe is ticking.
Yes. But we, but we're also, we're confident we'll be able to spend the money. So we're not at, I don't think, other places might be at risk where they don't think they can spend the money because the guidelines are too strict. But we are confident we will be able to spend the money and not risk having to return it. So it allows us to buy some time and wait to see if there's additional guidance that can help further the specific goals of the council.
Okay. Mr. Escobedo had a question.
We will have two years to spend it or to allocate the money?
Yeah, to allocate the money.
Allocate, okay. So let's say we allocate it by mid-June next year. That doesn't mean that we can spend it on June or before June. That means that we have to have the projects already approved, and then it's good to go.
Right.
Okay. Thank you.
The other big issue, this is in the budget, it's been in the budget and will be in the budget, but it's our ongoing increase in CalPERS costs. And just again, you know, it's almost not a budget hearing anymore without talking about CalPERS. So the payment in two thousand twenty-one, twenty-two is going to be nineteen point four million. So that's the amount of money for all funds that we will need to allocate to CalPERS. And just as comparison, in two thousand five oh six, it was five point six million. So CalPERS continues to grow as your actuary, as the city's actuary told us about a year ago, it'll, we anticipate it continuing to grow through twenty twenty-six, and then at that point leveling off a little bit, but also, I mean, with some growth, with growth past that, but not at the steeper rate that we've seen. And again, every dollar we're paying to CalPERS is funding that we can't use for other services here, but it does fulfill the retirement promises that we've made. We are still committed to funding our retirement commitments to our employees, and we anticipate being able to do so in this budget. Overall, the proposed staffing, we're looking at authorized full-time equivalent employees of five hundred and seventy-eight, with twelve new full-time employees, four new part-time employees. And those were positions already, for the most part, allocated by the council in the budget, but which funding wasn't available for last year. If you recall, one of the balanced budgeting strategies we had was to not eliminate the job, not eliminate the position. We know we needed that level of service, but as, as the employee vacated the job to hold it vacant, and then as a budget balancing strategy to take the funding away. So it was vacant and unfunded. So we were able to refund twelve of those and four part-time employees.
I hear on the TV and radio that there's nine million jobs out there that need to be fulfilled, and I assume this is part of those jobs. Does the city get on a regular basis, people coming in and applying for positions?
It's, yeah, we do have, we're always recruiting for something. We do encourage people to apply for our jobs. We, we've seen an impact on people applying for the jobs. We do remain an employer where people want to work. We're one of the top ten employers in Santa Maria. We're, you know, a strong employer regionally. People who are in this profession like to work in a, there's a lot of people who want to work in a bigger city with the diversity of operations that we have here. And also, we're big enough that if people want to specialize in a particular area, they can do that here versus in other agencies. So we do have a lot of folks who are interested in jobs, who are continuously applying, and we encourage them to. On the other hand, we have a lot of particular specialized jobs that we've had a hard time filling. And this budget, we've taken a few steps here to try to address some of that with some repositioning of jobs, clarifications of jobs, adjustments of salaries and compensation to try to be competitive in the areas where we continue to have challenges filling the jobs. And, you know, we're seeing the same issue other employers are having of not having the, the strong workforce applications that we've had in the past. And so we've had to adjust our method of recruitment. We're focusing on retention and growing our own employees. If we have an employee here who wants to grow in the organization, we're creating paths to make it easier for them to do that as a way, we just don't, we can't just count on always just posting a, a job announcement in the Santa Maria Times and getting a real robust applicant pool like we used to be able to.
What kind of new positions are we're looking?
That's, yeah, the second part of the agenda has that, and my laptop turned off. I'll, I'll get to that just in a little bit here. So the highlights of the changes to the appropriation are the service levels are maintained, Twelve, so the twelve new positions, four part-time positions. So they are the police service technicians, those were jobs that the council provided one-time funding for in the first year of the budget. They're filled positions to avoid layoffs, and so we're able to fund those. There was a crime analyst that we needed in the budget that we're now able to fund. We're actually recruiting for that. And that's a great job because we have the, the, we have the records management system, the new computer aided dispatch system in police, and that provides a lot of data. And so having someone who can understand police analysis and come in and do that work's going to be real key for the detectives in the police force who are working to solve crimes. The four firefighter positions that we talked about in last year's budget, who are funded by the SAFER grant, we have, we're, we're funding those for the upcoming budget. And then we're doing some adjustments in utilities, as I indicated, to try to stay competitive with regulatory compliance, solid waste, and maintenance workers. We're adding mechanics in public works where we're seeing that with our fleet of, the comp, the, we have complex fleet equipment, and we needed more mobility in our maintenance staff, and so we're providing a field mechanic and a lead mechanic there and vehicles to support them. In recreation parks, as I'd mentioned, we're at refunding staff there for a park ranger and a part-time clerk. In the city's attorney's office, we're adding a code enforcement officer. And then in HR, we are restructuring HR by function, and so adjusting jobs to do that. And we're creating, of all that, we're creating one new classification or proposing the council adopt one new classification, and that's creating a risk manager. If there's one thing we learned during the COVID pandemic is risk management's very important. And we have a, we do have a great risk management team and a great risk management function, but we recognize there's a lot of specialization for that job right now. We have a capable staff with an analyst leading that function, but it really, she's doing the work of a risk manager, and it is, and we were recommending class, changing the classification of that position to a risk manager. So that's the one new job we're creating. Yeah, thank you. Other highlights, as I indicated, to the general fund are, is, has two point six million more expenditures than revenue, and we think we'll be able to close that during the year with savings, but ask the council to appropriate some LEAF in the event that we don't, that we, we don't want to be able, we don't want to be at risk of going over appropriation authorization. We're not able to financially restore all of the employee reductions that were adopted in the budget last year. And that's primarily, again, we're seeing rising costs, and we aren't able to have the revenue grow at the rate that those costs are growing, and we anticipate that going on into the future. So we're being real careful of adding ongoing costs if we don't have the ongoing revenue. Good news with the projected revenue of the end of this year. So again, last year at the pandemic, we thought revenue was going to be horrible. It turned out to be not that horrible, not as horrible. And so the result of that is we'll have a surplus at the end of the year we're now in, and per the council policy, that is allocated a third, a third, a third into the LEAF reserve, into capital projects, and into a pension reserve. And that'll be one point eight million dollars cumutively. So that's good news. And then again, as a result of our focus on drawing down the ongoing budget gap, so we're happy this year, we're really at a gap of two point six million, which is manageable. That was four point three six million for twenty twenty-one and eight point five million in twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen. So we continue to really try to not have more expenditures than we have the revenue to cover. The other side of that is we still have the large list of unfunded commitments on page A twenty-five of the adopted budget. And you may recall that's somewhere around twenty-eight million. It'll be less now with these adjustments, but we still are underfunding our roads and our sidewalks and our workers' compensation, our fleet costs, some of the costs that are ongoing costs that we're going to need to keep a sharp eye on because, you know, our community doesn't want deteriorated roads and sidewalks, and plus that adds costs to everyone as, you know, if their car hits more potholes or people trip on a sidewalk, there's cost to that. And then we need to make sure we're covering the cost for our fleet replacement because that's going to happen whether we have the money for it or not. And so those are other things we're trying to keep a sharp eye on, but at first, we're trying to get our operating budget balanced and managed and keeping the other costs in, on target as well, or at least keeping a focus on the other cost. So then, yeah, we're open to other council questions, public comment. And as the mayor indicated at the beginning, and as Deputy City Clerk White mentioned, we did announce the two items. And so that's the end of item five A. We did announce item five B. And just briefly, I can talk about that real quick. It's a short item, but we have them as two separate items. So if the council adopts the recommendations for five A with those amendments as proposed, those will then result in personnel changes. And so five B would be the council's approving those personnel changes as, based on the budget allocation of five A. And also then, if we're making those personnel changes, we have a couple administrative things that the, were, that the council's required to adopt. One is the salary schematic. And so CalPERS, in their interpretation of Title II of the California Code of Regulations, recommends that all CalPERS employers maintain their compensation levels in one publicly available document approved and adopted by the city council. And so that's where the salary schematic comes in. So the council approves the budget, we have the salary schematic here for the council approval, post that online for the transparency. And then we have an amendment to the conflict of interest code, that we're, we're required to have a conflict of interest code and indicate which jobs are required to comply with it. And with the creation of the new risk manager position, that'll be one that falls under the conflict of interest code. And so we're asking the council to adopt an amended conflict of interest code for that change. And then that concludes the report on both five A and five B, and we're happy to answer questions the council may have.
Any questions from the council? Ms. Soto?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. My question is regarding the deposits into the LEAF fund and the transfers of the LEAF fund. I'm a bit confused. I believe that you mentioned in the report, and it was stated in the written report, that we want, that we're planning on transferring, if the budget gets approved, one point one million from the LEAF to the general operating fund, correct? But yet we're depositing back five hundred and seventeen, five hundred and seventy-nine thousand roughly, back into LEAF from the savings that we're splitting into thirds based on council policy? And so I guess my, my question, and maybe it's more of a point of clarity, is, are we, so does that still equate one point one, or is it like one point one minus the five hundred and seventy-five, seventy-nine thousand?
That's a fair question, right. So the, the, so the five, the one point eight million that's going into reserves, of which a third of that is to LEAF, is the surplus from this current fiscal year we're now ending. And so that's a real surplus, it's really going into the reserves. And so that's good news. The one point one coming back out of it is for the next fiscal year, starting July one. We'll, and we'll work hard to not draw it, but we asked for the council to appropriate that money. Just by law, we want, we need to have a balanced budget for one. And then second, we know we'll have to work to close that gap without using the LEAF, but we want to make sure that if those expenditure, if we're not able to cut to cut costs, and the expenditures really are as, as would be anticipated in the budget, that we would have the authority to draw the 1.1 million at the end of this next year. So it's likely that we won't have to draw the 1.1 million basically a year from now, but we're asking council to at least authorize that draw in the event that we're not able to come up with other savings.
So would it be like a similar scenario that we are in at the end of this fiscal year, where we, we, we transfer, right, for 2021, 2022, the 1.1, but if at the end of that fiscal year, there's a surplus, then we transfer the money back into the leaf fund, and then we do the process over?
Yeah, we hope so. The way we try to do it is, at the end of the, so it's always better to spend less than spend more, right? So we try to manage the budget well, and we try to always come in a little better than projected. And so this year, we came in a little better than projected. And that's, you know, I mean, if we could be perfect right on, that would be great, but there's a lot of moving parts in, in the $220 million budget. So, you know, coming in a little, you know, less than 1% over is a good target. And so then the council has made the policy direction that if there is a little bit of extra, council wants to fund it on capital improvements, pension reserves, and put it back in the leaf. And so on a normal year-to-year, we hope that that'll be the case.
You just have to document what goes in and what comes out.
Right. Yeah, and have the authority by the council. I mean, and so that's kind of the cyclical year, and, but the bigger problem we have is this, what we're calling the structural deficit. So if you look over the years, we have costs, primarily calpers, going up faster than revenue. And so it hasn't really changed the amount, I mean, you're still going to have those little year-end surpluses if we're doing the budget right, which we've been doing, but it'll result in not being able to fund all the positions and do all the things we want to do. So that's the impact of the structural deficit.
And may I ask?
Yeah, go ahead.
Another question that I have too is regarding the three pies that were, the three pots in which we're putting the surplus that we have for this fiscal year. In term, the pot for the pensions, is this the first time that we're putting money into that particular reserve for the pensions?
Third or fourth.
How, how much money do we have in the pension pot? Sorry. I, it's, I'm curious.
Don't you fool.
Fool. Sorry.
We don't want to have any pots.
Thank you for the question. We, we have been putting into pensions for about four or five years, I believe now. And I wish I knew exact the number, but it's a, I'm trying to think what it is. Let me look it up. See if I can look it up.
Okay.
But yeah, we've, we've been putting some in there, and I probably can't figure it out. So I'll figure it out for you and let you know. But it's, we've got at least, I want to say it's about 3 million in there now?
Oh, okay.
Roughly?
Yeah, okay.
I'm going to go roughly with that one.
I mean, it's a lot, but in the relative sense of things, it's, it's not.
We haven't been able to put as much as, of course, as we'd like to, and especially over the last few years, but, but it's growing. So that's good.
Yeah, because I remember that last year, we were having a conversation about the different way, the three different options that cities have to pay for pensions, and so I was just curious where we were with that saving pool.
Yeah, and our actuary, you're right. That was, yeah, we brought in the actuary Bartel to present those options and the strategies. And basically, all the strategies were save as much as you can, which is what the council's, well, I mean, we're saving at least a third of the savings, with realizing that capital and maintaining our rainy days are also priorities. With the strategy of, do we look down the line and try to shave off that pension cost when it's the highest, and then we're able to maintain our staff over that hump? Or do we build up the funding and then either set it aside in a trust or pay it down, or just give it straight to calpers and pay down our reserves? And, and council directed, you know, come back with a strategy to help look at that. And right now, we're still in the growing the pot phase. We're not really at where either of those two options are going to be applicable.
Ms. Waterfield?
I have a question in regards to our sales tax, because I look at the car dealerships, and they're almost empty. Have we received any numbers yet of how that has affected our sales tax amount?
The sales tax we do get is in arrears, and it's been strong, but you're right, with that chip shortage, the, there are fewer cars to sell, and the lots are emptier. And I don't know if, if our sales tax consultants have gave us any estimates on that yet.
They, they have given us an estimate that they're expecting it to decline. I don't recall the amount, or, but that's declining, but of course, other things are increasing, fuel prices in particular. So there's, it's kind of an offset, and it's, it seems to be steady going forward. So we've had quite a few different, like I said, in the autos, they're expecting that to go down. However, with fuel prices, with other building and industry, the construction, that's been going up really high. The costs for those, for the materials is really high, so the increase in those prices, so it's, even though the autos are going down, the others are going up, so it's kind of offsetting.
So in a really, really good year, if we had full car lots, it'd be amazing then. Okay.
Just a question. Any other questions from the council? Mr. Cordero?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I, I think it's, it's certainly everyone's opinion here that we're coming out of probably one of the most difficult years we've had in just over 100 years. Not being here for the pandemic 100 years ago, I, I don't know what this council did about things. But I do know that in this, in the overall scheme of things, there are some, some agencies, some governments that are having to pass special emergency financial concern, orders of financial concern. And we haven't had to do that. We haven't used all of our leaf money. We, we haven't used some other things. We, we've actually performed, I, I think, quite well, comparatively speaking, to, to many other cities in the state. So having, having said that, I just, I just wanted to mention that to the listening public and to our, our constituents, as well as our employees, that we, we have managed to, to, to keep a safe place in our, in our financial status with the, within the city. And I think that that's certainly a tribute to your office, Mary's office, and to each and every department head that has had the opportunity to make their contribution to cutting, cutting, cutting their budgets. So I, I think that we, you know, we, we listen so, so much about the doom and gloom of, of pension costs and those kinds of things. I think, I think we're going to have to declare a, a local holiday when those pension funds are actually paid off, and we don't, we don't have to do them anymore. I don't know that I'll be here to celebrate that holiday, but, but it's going to be one heck of an opportunity for all the cities in the state of California that, that are involved with this excessive pension funds. I just think that it's, it's a fortunate position for us to be in as a community, comparing to what other communities are going through in this time of financial difficulties. And we're, we are, as you said a couple of times in your, in your, in your dissertation there, that this is better than we thought it was going to be, or we, the funds are more than we thought they were predicted to be. And I think you said that enough times that it really resonates that, that we're a very, very fortunate community to be in our current financial position, even though it is perhaps a bit less than we would like it to have been. And I would also reiterate something that I've said from the dais many times, is that we, we really need to concentrate on, on preparing that leaf fund and restabilizing that leaf fund and making it as healthy as we can possibly make it. Because I don't know who the council people are going to be, but they will do this again. This, this financial problem is going to come around again, and they will end up thanking us for, for, for having this, this leaf fund reestablished for, for the community to, to not go into a financial straits. And thank you very much for your efforts and the efforts of every single department head.
Thank you. Ms. Soto?
Thank you. I have another, another question pertaining to the leaf fund. I know that in the report, it states that the goal is to have it back at, well, at one point, at its highest point, it was a little bit over 11 million, and that the goal is for us to bring it up at least to 10, 10 million? Was that, did I read that correct in the report? I'm, I'm not sure if I misread, but that's what I understood from the report. And so I guess my question is, you know, when you look at the great scheme of things, right, and how large our city budget, at least the general fund budget is, right? Like, what is it, 78 million or so? Around there? So how, how far would 10 million take us? I mean, when I'm thinking of like, a reserves for an organization, right, typically, you want to have, what, like, three months cash on hand? And so I'm just really curious in my, how that equates, how would that be put into practice in a, in a city government, finance, budget?
That's a very good question. Thank you for the, for that. One real quick, back on to the pensions, it is about 2.8 million right now, and then we expect to put about 0.6 million, about 600,579,000 in this year. So it'll be about 3.4 at the end of this year, hopefully. So that's, but to your question about the leaf and how much is enough, that's something that is a council policy also that would get, we would look at and see. Right now, with our unfunded, unrestricted fund balance is 10 million. So with a leaf balance of 10 million, that means we have 20 million essentially with that. So I think that makes it fairly healthy in that respect. So we have, we have more than one. And then we also have the economic stabilization fund balance that's been designated, and that's 19.6 million. I think it's, I know it's 19 million. It might be 0.6, might be 0.4, but it's 19 million, so.
Great. Thank you.
Does that help?
Yeah, it does. Thank you.
Mary, if I'm not mistaken, it, it costs about a million dollars a week just to turn the lights on in our city. Is that about right?
I think that's a little low. I think it's about.
So, so, so even at a, so I, I'm, I'm equating Councilwoman Soto's question to that comment, and that is, how far is 10 million dollars going to take us? You're suggesting it'll take us less than 10 weeks out, if that's all we have to depend on.
Yes.
So it's a little over a million, it's, it's, it's more than a million dollars a week just to open the doors and turn the lights on to operate our city. And that's a lot of money.
Right. But I think it's also important to note, like, the other points that, that our Director of Finance just, just pointed out, right, that we have other funds, and if we, if we continue to make progress as we've been making, we can be, healthy, financially healthy.
Yes, that's correct. And as Mr. Delwell's been saying, that's why we're trying to get to where we're spending what, no more than what we're receiving. We want to have a little extra, not, you know, just, just like our, our homes. We have our budgets, and we need to, we know how much is coming in, and we try to stay within our means. And I think the city has done a, a good job at doing that, so.
And I have other questions, but I think these are pertaining more to departmental questions. I noticed that for the police budget, there is, there, there, it was out, is it, I guess I, I want to know more. I'm curious to know more about the vehicle that's being, is it the vehicle that's being purchased for mental health response? I'm, I'm really intrigued by that, and so I'm hoping I can learn more about what that would look like and what kind of response that would be. I don't.
Yeah, I think Chief Schneider could speak to that, but that is also the item, we were going, we were going to have that as a presentation to the city council last week or last meeting when we had Downtown Fridays, but it's still pending. But it is a real, I think, innovative approach for us to address that need and work with our partner agencies on it.
All right. Is this on? Yeah, for that vehicle, ideally, what we want to do is, we're in the process of working on a MOU with behavioral wellness to have a co-response vehicle, much like we, they have in the sheriff's department. And ideally, we want to do that with an unmarked vehicle. So when the officer and the clinician respond out to help somebody in a crisis, that they can do that in the most non-threatening way possible. And so having a vehicle that's more, you know, unmarked, without any decals, is that process. So we would, we don't have any vehicles currently in our fleet that we could designate for that. So it was something that we had been asking for in our, our budget, and then it was approved in the mid-cycle.
Thank you for that clarity.
Any other questions, comments?
Oh, I'll ask the last one.
And I, I think it's great, you know, that we have a healthy budget, and we keep, keep fiscally healthy here, but there's also, I worry about the poor investments calpers has made over the years at different points, which has caused us to be where we are right now. And that we have no control over. You had another question, Ms. Soto?
Yeah, it's my last one, I, I promise. And this one is to the fire department. And I, I noticed that part of the budget, to be able to balance the budget, there's the defunding of the deputy chief. And so I'm just curious as to how that would impact the, the operate, the, the operations of the, of the department, and what, what implications or what, how are they mitigating that loss? And what are, what are they doing to ensure that, you know, our fire prevention program is, it's still meeting the demands, I guess you can say, even with, with the loss of positions?
Sure, thank you. And I think Chief Tuggles here too as well, yeah. So, so fire departments, it's a challenging budget to keep balanced as well. It's primarily staffing. It has, there's fixed schedules with them. If the, if someone's not available, there's no savings because you have to fill that vacancy with overtime. So it's a, it's a difficult budget to be able to balance when we're dealing with a situation of rising personnel costs and flat revenue. And so the last year's budget proposed or had unfunding the second unit in the fire station one. This year, we're prioritizing and able to maintain that second unit. The deputy fire chief is vacant with the, with the promotion of Chief Tuggles from deputy chief to fire chief. And so we're proposing to maintain that vacancy as the budget savings in that department in order to maintain the frontline services. But it's going to continue to be a challenge in the subsequent years, as far as the fire prevention with the approval by the council of fee increases. That has additional revenue available for us to fill the fire marshal position, and that position's under recruitment right now. We anticipate it being filled relatively quickly, quickly, but if, and Chief Tuggles, one eye on this meeting, I assume, and one eye on his daughter's Olympic trials in Omaha, but.
I was trying to ask him to unmute. Oh, there you go.
So, yeah, he can add to it.
I think you're on.
Oh, good evening, everybody. As Jason mentioned, well, first of all, thank you for the chance to comment just real quickly. And as Jason mentioned, I am actually walking back from Olympic trials where Claire was able to get 10th place in the 200 free finals. So thank you for the support for that. It was clearly well worth it. Many great performance from her this evening. Back to the question at hand, though. Yeah, to Jason's point, or the city manager's point, it will continue to be a challenge with the staffing without the deputy chief. The deputy chief brings a lot of, a lot of good expertise to the table regarding internal matters, internal operations, allows us to provide leadership, mentorship to the battalion chiefs. And as we saw over the last year and the pandemic, the internal operations were a big challenge with every. big challenge with everything we were trying to get accomplished. Without that position, draws the fire chief position back into a lot of those, and then also takes away some of the daily supervision that the BCS, the battalion chiefs would have in leadership and mentorship. But having said that, we are balancing, you know, the budget and the needs of the city at large. And then fortunately, with the user fees that were approved by council that will help support the fire marshal, which is a badly needed position, that leadership, that mentorship in the prevention division to, as we talked about before in the user fees, with inspections, also plan reviews and permit checks, or plan reviews and permit and inspections to get new construction going. And we've not seen a bit of a slowdown on that front. So this will be, that position is badly needed. We're really looking forward to getting that position filled and filling out the positions that we have funded available in the prevention vision. And I'll take any questions if there are any.
Thank you.
Any questions? Of Chief Tugel.
Thank you so much, and congratulations.
Thank you very much. Thank you to the council for that support all along. Appreciate it.
Ms. Soto, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So as I'm looking back at the report, I know that in the PowerPoint, Mr. Stilwell, it said the 1.8 million was going to be equally divided into the three buckets, which is LEAF, capital projects, and pensions. But on the written staff report, it just says, I can't pronounce the word. Commute, you do that one. English is my second language. I struggle sometimes with certain words. That word, equally, so that to me sounds like in total. And so I was wondering if we can just add that other word, like, equally into the three, so that in case people ask, well, how much are you putting into the three buckets if the total is 1.8 million? Because I don't think that part was clear, and that was going to be one of my questions, but that you mentioned it in the PowerPoint.
On the highlight change, it does say deposit approximately 1.8 million cumulatively into the LEAF, capital projects, and pension. And as Finance Director Harvey mentioned, it's about 600,000 into each of those.
Thank you.
Any other questions in the council? Oh, Mr. Escobedo.
So just, I was watching the presentation, and it stated that we will be receiving 37 million from the ARPA, 38. It's just, I mean, I was looking at one of the documents I received, and, I mean, at the beginning, it says that we were going to receive 40.61 million. So how was, what happened with it?
They skimmed? I don't know. So the federal government did have original projected estimates of the 40, I think it was 40.1, 40.61 million. The refined estimates were the 38 approximately, and we received half of that in cash a couple weeks ago. So I think, I don't know, I mean, the estimates refined based on probably what happens when Congress does the legislation, they pencil it out based on the formula, and then when Treasury gets into the details writing the check, they recognize that the formula wasn't as precise. But, I mean, it's pretty close, obviously, nearly 40 million.
Thank you.
And that's a good question. And to that, adding to that, or a question to that question, I guess, is I noticed that in, that it was mentioned in the report that because it's only a one-time allocation that we're receiving from the federal government, that we didn't include that in the projections of next fiscal year. And so I'm curious, when it's this time next year, how is the council going to adopt the budget? Are we going to see a 38 million surplus in our budget if we didn't include it, or would that just be in a different bucket?
Yeah.
Okay.
Ms. Harvey?
Thank you. We are going to be using a separate fund for that. We have a special fund that's called nonrecurring grants, because it only happens once in who knows how long. And so we'll be managing it through there. There will be, as we identify those projects, we will allocate them at that point. So only the amount of revenue that would be applicable to, let's say, the general fund, if it's something that we're reimbursing for the general fund, then that portion would be included. But it will be at that point, so we'll have some, I guess I would say, transfers in sense of that. So that's how we'll be tracking it, and we'll come to council and let you know what those projects are and how those will be funded.
And, you know, Mary, while you're talking about that, then some of the hires that we will have on contract, they will also be in that fund?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, any other questions? Hearing none, Madam Clerk. Do we have any written correspondence or requests to speak?
We have no written communications on this item and no requests to speak.
Okay, I'll bring it back to the council for any discussion and/or motion.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to adopt a resolution approving the amendments to the 2021-22 mid-cycle city budget. Can I also include 5B?
Yes.
And also to adopt a resolution approving personnel changes as a result of the amendments to the adopted 2021-22 budget and the updated, and the updated city of Santa Maria salary schematics, and also adopt a resolution amending Appendix A of the Conflict of Interest Code for Designated Filers of the City of Santa Maria.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Any more discussion?
I just want to make sure that the 1.8 into the LEAF.
Be distributed equally?
Yes, that we add those terms.
I'll do that.
And include that.
Okay. Okay, if not, Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Councilmember Waterfield.
Aye.
Councilmember Escobedo.
Aye.
Councilmember Cordero.
Aye.
Councilmember Soto.
Aye.
Madam Mayor Patino.
Aye. Motion carries. Next item will be a report by the city manager, Mr. Stillwell.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And I have to thank Mary Harvey for, I mean, this was a difficult budget to crank and get done in a very tight timeframe, and she worked an inordinate amount of hours to get it done, and it's done right. And so, thank you, Mary. Of course, thank you, everyone else.
Thank you.
Really, thank you, Mary. But, so, thank you again for adopting the budget. We look forward to providing the service for the upcoming year. The next meeting of the City Council, based on tonight's action, the council has canceled the meeting of July 6th, so the next meeting of the council will be July 20th. Two items of note there, we will bring forward a COVID update based on the reopening on June 15th. We anticipate this council chambers to be reopened for the next meeting on July 20th. The utility billing finance department's reopened to the public. City Hall is, we still need to modify the doors and a couple modest modifications. We anticipate reopening City Hall here in the next week or so. So we'll provide the COVID update. We also have a pavement management plan update, which the council likes seeing to see what roads are maintained and what our pavement management index is. And if you'd like, I could just briefly mention COVID update, if you'd like.
Sure.
We'll do a full update at the next meeting, but, so beginning today, California did fully reopen. We no longer have restrictions on occupancy or social distancing in any business. The Santa Barbara County Health Officer Orders are no longer being issued, and they're now deferring to the state's Public Health Officer Order. And the RISE program that was working to reopen our community, that has ended today as well, so no additional restrictions on our businesses. One challenge continues to be the interface between businesses and people and employers. And so we're still required to have masks for employers based on Cal OSHA guidance. They are working to update the guidance to align it with the overall reopening, but at this point, employers, whether it's the city or other employers in our community, will need to have employees with masks. We'll continue to recommend that people have masks and recommend they social distance and recommend they wash their hands, those type of things, but we won't be enforcing that for the people coming in. And I also wanted to mention, the pool is reopened for recreation swim, which is great now that we're in a heat wave. We've also opened our community centers as cooling centers, and we'll provide more of an update on July 20th.
Thank you. Anyway, so we'll start the oral reports of council members. Mr. Cordero, would you like to start?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I continue to work with the new name of the organization, Communicify and the United Way, quite heavily, but I think the most impacting thing that I attended during this last two weeks was the services for Bob Herrick at his funeral. Bob is, as you all know, is a retired Santa Maria police officer. And I just want to comment that having been there from the beginning, the men and women that we had perform out there in the color guard were absolutely fantastic. They did an excellent job. And watching the, or knowing the evolution of that unit, and it all started right out on this lawn in front of the city hall many years ago, and it's grown into some, a unit that is, I would think as good as any other unit that is put out there. And not only that, they worked not only with our people, but they worked with the Sheriff's Department and with other agencies, and you would swear that these people had been working together for years and years and years. It was just phenomenal, the service that they provided for the Herrick family, and I was proud to have been a history.
Thank you. Ms. Soto.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. One item that I would like to report on is on Communicify. I was invited to be their keynote speaker for their Youth Matters Summit that they have going on this week. I spoke about the importance of civic engagement and gave out all of your email addresses and phone numbers.
And that was your speech?
These are your city representatives. This is the district, and this is who your rep is, who you can call. And then I think another, not so much a report, but more like an announcement, is that 3CE, which is Central Coast Energy Program, has about $700,000 in funding to help residents throughout their service area for, as like rebates if they want to purchase an electric vehicle. I just purchased one, and thanks to 3EC, I was actually able to afford it. And so I encourage everybody in the community to go and check out the resources.
Thank you. Ms. Waterfield.
The only reportable item I have, Madam Mayor, is my radio show with Ben Hayes post City Council.
Hey. Mr. Escobedo.
Not yet, to report.
Okay. I have been asked to announce that there's a Young People's Vaccine Clinic. It'll be Sunday, June 20th, from 10:30 to 3:30 at 625 South McClellan, and I'm not sure where South, 625 South McClellan. Anyway, that will, oh, McClellan, okay, I'm going over there, okay. And you can sign up on myturn.ca.gov. Again, on myturn.ca.gov, and that's vaccines available to ages 12 and up. And some of you may know Eric Frost, and we lost Eric. And he was, he and his wife had been such an integral part of the community. I don't remember when I first met them, but they aren't from here. But I think it was really important, before he passed, he told his beloved wife, Judy, "My friends and family know who I am. Please tell them how much I enjoyed, appreciated, and value their company and friendship." And that probably says it all. Eric was such a fine man, and he and his wife were involved in a lot of community activities. He was just passionate about education, and he did a lot of volunteering and civic affairs, and especially the Scholarship Foundation of Santa Barbara County. And if you were there, you always saw Eric and Judy. And a scholarship will be established in his name at the Scholarship Foundation of Santa Barbara for a North Santa Barbara County student pursuing a nursing career. So June 2nd, I went to the updated Santa Maria Key Leaders Call. June 3rd, the California Cities Housing Community and Economic Development Policy Committee. On June 4th, attended the mayors and city managers meeting. And June 9th, North County Subregional Meeting. June 10th, Santa Barbara County Legislative Briefing. And June 11th, Fighting Back Santa, the Board Meeting for Fighting Back Santa Maria Valley. June 12th, the Livable California Teleconference. And this morning, I did the Ben Hayes Show. And I would like to let everyone know that I would really like to close the meeting in recognition of John Spencer and Spencer's Fresh Markets. They're celebrating 50 years of service in the grocery industry today. And he's made a great contribution to Santa Maria and the Santa Maria Valley, but he started at Williams Brothers Market. And it seems amazing that 50 years has gone by, but congratulations to you, John Spencer. Job well done. Any other comments? This meeting is adjourned.